Good evening. We will call this meeting to order for the August 17th, 2022, Apple Valley Planning Commission Meeting. Welcome. Due to the pandemic, the commission will continue to offer virtual and in-person participation at this meeting. I'd like to welcome our in-person and virtual audiences to the meeting and make a brief audience announcement. In-person attendees, when your name is called, please approach the podium to address the commission. Virtual attendees, during the meeting, if you have a question or comment, please submit them to the meeting organizer, and the organizer will forward them to the planning commission. The first item on tonight's agenda is, or approval is of the agenda. Do we have any changes from staff?
Mr. Chair, no changes to the agenda.
And from commissioners?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay. Approved by Schindler and seconded by Deekman. The next item is the approval of consent agenda. These items consist of routine and routine and will be enacted in a single motion unless the commissioner requests to pull an item. What is the pleasure of the commission?
Move approval of consent agenda.
Second.
Approved by Schindler and seconded by Deekman. So moved. Oh. All in favor for a vote? Signify by saying aye.
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 And aye. And no by nay. So moved. The next item on the agenda is, excuse me, the approval of the agenda. Do we need to, Sharon, I think we didn't vote on that?
It's in the consent agenda, so by...
Okay.
Did you say the agenda? I thought you did move.
Yeah.
Okay. At this point, we continue with the public hearing items. Tonight, we have two public We will open the public hearing for item 4A, the affidavit of publication of notice of public hearing is available for inspection in the planning department. Anyone wishing to speak at this public hearing should be sure to fill out the audience roster, or if virtual, register with the meeting organizer. Include name, addresses, so that accurate records can be maintained. We'll begin the procedure with a brief presentation by city staff, followed by a partition, presentation by the petitioner of the hearing. Upon conclusion of the presentation, staff will ask for comments on the proposal in conference with pertinent regulations and policies. After that, comments will be taken from the general public.
Thank you. What you have before you tonight is a request for two zoning amendments to plan development number 507, Zone 1, to add building material sale store as a permitted use within that, within that zone, and then requesting an increase in the building coverage in Zone 1 from 20% to 30%, and then site plan building permit authorization to allow for 80,000 square foot buildings and material sale store. Almost doesn't seem to be working.
We've had trouble before. Why don't you, we go slide by slide, just I'll move it.
Okay. This is the location. It is the site of the Apple Valley Carmike 15 Theaters, located on the east side of Cedar Avenue, just north of 157th Street and south of 155th The property is comp plan guided for commercial and is also zoned, the plan development currently as stated, the plan development does not allow for that type of use within the, within that zone, within that plan development, hence the need for the zoning amendment. This is the site for the Carol, Center Fourth Edition, that's a site outlined in red. It's a little hard to see. There are several drink, excuse me, several easements, a variety of easements within the, within the property, and I had mentioned in the staff report that based upon when the, if this gets approved, the building, new building location and such, there will be necessary to vacate some of these easements, in particular, public utility, public drainage and utility easements. Next. So you can see, this is the current conditions. You've got a 73,000 multi-screen theater located on the south side of the property with a large field of parking just to the north of that, and then additional parking located farther north and just east of the Holiday Station and the Red Robin Restaurant. You can see the demo plan that they're proposing, obviously removing the building, changing up and removing the parking lot in the front of the building. They're not looking to really touch that more northerly parking lot area. And then you can see the, I've outlined in the area in red, the lines that shows the types of storm sewer and other pipes that need to be removed, and then also trees located in the back, on the south side, inside, in the parking lot islands, and then a couple on the north end of the, or on the east side of the building. This is the proposed site plan. Again, looking at it, 80,000 square foot building. If you recall, we saw this building a while ago as a sketch plan. And first of all, I just want to apologize. I understand that you didn't get the plans, the plan set in your packet, and a little bit of my problem with, with me as well as a program that we use to create these documents, so. So you don't have them, so these are somewhat new to you because this is a little bit different than what you saw in the original plan, or the sketch plan. The sketch plan showed that the building was basically going to be oriented, where the front of the building was oriented on the east, and now it's on the west side along Cedar Avenue. And then also, they showed that along the north side of the, north side of the building, in the parking area, there was going to be underground stormwater maintenance facility there, and now they have two open infiltration basins, one on the north side and one on the south side to handle that. Access is a little bit different. In talking with them and review by our city engineer, there were some issues with some access points. They wanted to keep the existing access along the north, just north of that ponding area, and then asked that the access be modified along the, be the southerly access along Gaslight Drive. So they make that change. You can see on then, that the entrance will be on the north, or on the east-west side, getting my orientation correct, and then the loading dock area will be on the east side as well as the trash enclosure, as you can see. The grading plan, again, this is a flat area, so there's not a lot of grading that needs to be done, except for the, making the connections and regrading the site for the two ponding areas, for making it pad-ready, as well as the parking lot, ripping up the parking lot and creating the, the new parking that would be located along the, the north and the west side of the building. Utility plan, the utilities are already available there. They would just have to make the connections to the existing utilities, or be a little bit different than what we normally would, or, excuse me, it's just going to be a little bit different than probably what's existing out there, just because of the orientation of the building itself. And this is the landscape plan. Taking a look at that, this, we feel that there's an opportunity to do some additional landscaping, in particular, along the east side of the building to help soften that area, because there is, if you know the east side of this area along Gaslight, there is a senior facility over there, senior apartment building run by Dakota County CDA, so helping to soften that up would, would be a, a good reason to allow for, or to provide for additional landscaping on that, on that east side. So providing that, and in particular, kind of softening up the area where the trash enclosure is, as well as the, the loading dock area. Even though the loading dock area, you can see there's a line that goes out to the north from the, in the loading dock area. And I can't use this, so. And that's where the, there'll be a wall there to help screen that, so. And then the building elevations, the materials that are being used are consistent with what we'd like to see. There is, this is a big building, 80,000 square feet, so you'll see an expanse of different, an expanse of the wall, but they have tried to break it up with different types of materials. This building, the elevations don't come out as clear as they should, but there are different textures and colors of the building. And then also with some pilasters at, at intervals along the, along the sides of the buildings to help kind of break it up. And again, you can see at the bottom of, that's the front door, that's the piece that would be facing along Cedar Avenue. Just one other note related to the landscaping, going back, the idea of trying to do some type of landscaping along the Cedar Avenue corridor, it would be good to try to soften that area up. We'll work with them again, but in that, in that corridor, there, that's where all the private utilities are located, and it's, would be a challenge to be putting some landscaping in there, and the impact and the conflict that it would have with the utilities that are in that, in that corridor along Cedar Avenue. So with that, we're just asking that the hearing be, be open. There are some items that we want to address further with the applicant before we move forward with any recommendation to the planning commission. With that, I'll take any questions.
Commissioner Schindler?
Mr. Chair, Tom. Yeah, that's a fine one. Well, if you, with the landscaping, I agree. I think that, I guess it would be the southeast corner is, is the one that I would say there's a lot of opportunity to put some landscaping. I, it's, the wall helps, but it also would kind of screen the wall and the trash enclosure as well. The other thing, if you go back to, let's see, the elevations. It's not a big enough picture for me to really, and it's all kind of looks like the same color. So I guess I'd need to see better elevations that I can actually see the coloring, and, because what I'm, what I'm looking at on this page is, just looks like it's just a gray building.
Yeah, you can kind of see where the different colors are, kind of with that horizontal banding area. That's where you're seeing some different colors related, or...
Horizontally along the...
Yeah, so you see the horizontal lines along the buildings, then I, you see a different color within each, you know, so the bottom is different than that middle horizontal area, and then to the top of the area too. We'll try to see if we can come up and provide you with some better, I mean, the stuff that they provided us shows the color, but it just doesn't transcend, I guess, into the, into the elevations.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Deekman?
Mr. Chair, and Tom, is it possible actually to, we have all four elevations here. Is it possible to have one elevation per slide, as an example, so that the commission would have a better understanding of what's proposed?
Sure.
Mr. Chair, Tom. The previous building, 72,000 square feet, why does this building seem so much larger on the lot? I mean, the entire field of parking is gone and being consumed by the building of 8,000 feet more?
It's a good question. I've got the, the area of the building was created from the, so I know the area, I received that, or that information through the Dakota County GIS system, and that's what it calls out. Yeah, I guess it does look a little bit different than this.
Can you go back to the demo?
Yeah. It's just maybe the linear aspect of this building compared to, it's a little bit, the other one's a little bit more square.
Sorry.
So this building is half the size on this lot as the other building? So, and then, I guess, the reason for the question is, is parking, what, what would we need to allow for parking for this particular, what is the, the number of parking spaces required for this 80,000 square foot facility?
Because it's a buildings, we consider it kind of like a hardware operation, that then it has different, different numbers. I believe it's like, did I put it in here? But maybe I didn't, but it's, I can get that information for you. It's like maybe, it's like 1 through 800, 1 per 800 square feet.
Okay.
So this one, in the, in the movie theater, would be based on the number of seats.
Should work.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, that's, I mean, if it's 80,000, it's 80,000. It seems off based on the layout, but I'm more concerned about the parking?
And the, the demand isn't as high for parking for, obviously, for, you know, demand is different, for a movie theater versus a, this type of operation. We conclude that the demand isn't as high, obviously, for, if this was an 80,000 square foot Target or Walmart or something like that, the numbers would change, obviously. I mean, that, it goes from, I think that's, let's just say, roughly one, one space for 200 square feet versus one space for 800 square feet for something like this. So it's a little bit different. They are able to count the parking, that's, the parking field that's to the north. However, you know, realistically, I think we understand that most people are going to park in the, as close to the front door as possible, so.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner McCall?
Mr. Chair, Tom, I concur, I think, at your assessment of the landscaping on the east side and the west side as well. I think that those, your concerns make sense to me. And I think maybe another issue is perhaps the next time around, or perhaps as things move forward, there could be an elevation drawing that incorporates the landscaping plan that you propose, so that you can see if and how things are softened up from those vantage points, from looking from the, from the east and from the west, from any other direction or side of the building. I, I share Mr. Deekman's, well, interest. I don't know if you'd call it a concern with respect to the, to the size of the building relative to the lot. The floor, the location map that was in our packet has an aerial photo that I think does a better job of showing, as opposed to the demo plan. I'm not sure if you have that.
Yeah, actually, yeah, the first, yeah, either that photo or the, the first demo plan where you can actually see how the, the east and west side of the current building is much closer to Cedar Avenue on the west and Gaslight on the, on the east. But, you know, there, there, there is a request, you know, to, you know, increase the building coverage from 20 to 30%. I guess that's, to me, I have some concern about the, the parking for the building and whether there would be, you know, I'm assuming they're requesting an 80,000 square foot building because that's what they need for their, for their business. But I guess that request, the size of the building tied into the increase in building coverage as it affects both the parking as well as sort of the aesthetic, is, is, is of interest and concern to me.
Yeah, we did pause a little bit when, you know, seeing, well, it's really at 28.5, 1 and 1/2% difference than the 30%, but easier to round up when you're dealing with these types of numbers. But taking a look at the overall size of that area, I mean, that, that lot is probably 80% covered in hard surface already, guy, you know, the parking and the building. So, I mean, it's pretty well covered with hard surface, and so we kind of thought, well, increasing the building coverage, is it going to make a dramatic difference with what's already existing out there as far as impervious surface? And likely not. But again, always remembering that these, the increase in the building coverage in Zone 1 is for all of the zone. So others, other things could happen. And I think, if I remember correctly, it's probably only the three lots, the Holiday, the Red Robin, and this lot that is at that coverage. And again, it's probably with the building coverage as well as the parking lots and whatever in both those other spaces. It's, you know, there's a lot of impervious surface already on all those lots.
Sure, good point. Thanks. Commissioner Schindler?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Tom. And I, I just wanted to add in, they are adding a lot of extra green space and drainage onsite, which I don't know before that where it all would drain, where it's set up to drain right now. But they would be providing some onsite storm water runoff and...
Yep, for the infiltration, yep.
And that adds some greenery too. But yeah, it does, just by the difference in how the one building looked and now this building, it seems like it's way bigger, but...
You know, and maybe for the next meeting, we could somehow maybe super, have them superimpose, you know, one of the, you know, one building on the other building, the layout, just kind of see how it is, and just to make everyone comfortable with how it's, maybe it's the orientation. Commissioner McCall gave, you know, it seems to be a little bit more green space with this one than their, you know, the movie theaters seem to be closer to Cedar as well as, as Gaslight, so it's a little bit more, I can't think of the word right now, more stocky, I guess, than, than the other ones, than the new buildings are potentially a little bit more linear.
Okay. Commissioner Deekman?
Tom, if you don't know right now this fine, but what is the lot size?
I think it's 16 acres.
So is it...
Or no, that's a, I'm thinking of another one. I don't know off the top of my head.
Yeah, okay. Maybe for the next time.
Yep.
Because thinking about the math here, are we over the 20% right now?
I don't know. We could be, yeah. Yeah, you're thinking of the math, maybe.
I'm guessing we are, if, if we're only increasing, you know, 8,000 square feet. Okay, for the next meeting, I guess.
Yep.
Thank you.
I had a couple of questions, Tom, that kind of echoed on what the other commissioners have asked. One question I have, maybe this is a question for the petitioner, but the parking area to the north?
Mm-hmm.
Could that eventually be a separate outlot that could be used for another purpose with its size, location?
Well, there could be. I guess there could be the potential for it. There may be, we've been trying to work with the developer a little bit. There, I know there is some cross-access, cross-parking agreements that are still out there related to, I think, with Red Robin as well as with the MBTA. And that lot may be where those agreements, or at least the cross-parking agreements are in place. And so that, there could be some potential for some infill there. But then you get into the situation of having to enter or to break that type, that agreement with the other, with the other two properties, the MBTA as well as the Red Robin.
Okay. And then part of that too is if something like that would happen, it goes back to the concern about questioning about parking, what that would mean with the, the building being able to support parking without that.
Sure.
And then it goes to the question, do that, the second larger holding pond to the north, is that the best way of doing that considering the layout? Is, should that be the, part of the original proposal is not to have a open, to have that underground, still leave the one to the south, but have that other one for, to be able to satisfy the parking concern, and then also with the green space that we were looking, talking about. So that's just some feedback for you to add to your discussion, and then if the petitioners here, if they want to make comments on that.
Yeah, that's something that we can look at. I think, I don't know, and this, we'll talk with the city engineer. I mean, I don't know if that, if it makes a difference to them, and I think both being an underground system or above-ground system, it's still accomplishing the same thing. But is there value in having the underground system versus the above-ground?
And that's what I was looking at, is there an added value to having the underground versus the currently proposed system? And then in terms of landscaping and building facades, as said, you know, by what we have right now, it's really hard for us to provide any really comment, but other than the fact of, for the petitioner to understand that we do expect to have that kind of a balanced or four-sided building of equal amenities on it. And I think we have some really good examples in Apple Valley as far as both the landscaping and the, you know, the outside facades is, you know, target south, for an example, the Newman Arts, and what has been done over, and Walmart in terms of screening too. So I think there's some really good, strong examples there to support having the landscape enhanced. So that concludes my comments. So if the petitioner is here, would like to come forward?
Good evening.
My name is Alan Ketchbull with Kemble Horn Engineering. I do have a partner, Kelton McCoy, with the ownership group is trying to get online. He said he wasn't, the meeting hadn't started yet. But if he's online, he can also answer any questions. But, and again, we do appreciate your time this evening. We took into account a lot of the comments that commission had from the sketch plan review committee, you know, kind of flipping the building so the front faces Cedar, keeping both existing access drives, enhancing the elevations. Apologize, they're hard to read, but we'll, we'll fix that for you. We did get staff comments this week, so we are still going through all the comments. Nothing looked detrimental or anything that jumped out at us, so we'll take all that into consideration. Answer one of the questions as far as, yeah, I mean, the existing, the size of the existing lot is 6.45 acres. So current building coverage is like 25.9%, where we're asking for 28.5. So little bit of an increase, but still over the 20% with the current building, you know, and we are looking at a decrease in impervious surface from existing to proposed by roughly 8,000 square feet or so. You know, and per code, as far as required parking stalls, you know, per the plan, 182 was required. We're providing 241 roughly, which meets all the required parking for the site, and also cross-access easement for both the restaurants and parking from, from the city across the street. So we did feel, and that's kind of the reasons that we did go with the above-ground versus the below- versus the, uh, below-ground, uh, cause we had enough parking and, and this use, like you said, is not a high-intense, uh, it's people coming and going, it's not, uh, the major rush hours or tons of people at one time. So we did feel that, uh, the parking was, uh, was adequate for, uh, for the use. But happy to answer any questions that you would have, otherwise I've written down your comments and will work with Tom and staff to, uh, make some adjustments and-
Commissioners, do you have any? I have one question. Do you, how many, uh, parking spots are in that north section, roughly? Or that, you can come back next time with that if you take a look at that.
Counting them roughly, there's roughly a hundred.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Yep.
All right. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
The next portion is if there's anybody, um, if you are here in person, please come to the podium to speak and address all comments, questions to the chair. If you are joining us virtually or by phone, please submit your questions, comments to the meeting organizer. If there's anybody here for, like to come forward, comments, please do. And meeting organizer, do we have?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to have Alex just to explain, uh, it looks like, uh, uh, there are registered people.
Okay.
Whether they want to speak or not, uh, we, we never know unless they move the mouse, but Alex will explain in a little greater detail.
Alex?
Our meeting organizer, uh, I just checked in with them. Kelton is in attendance in the meeting. If he'd like to speak, all that the meeting organizer needs to do is unmute him.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, uh, or if anyone else wants to speak in the room, we're ready to, uh, perhaps just ask the organizer, uh, is there anyone?
Meeting organizers, or anybody that would like to speak to this, um, public hearing item?
Uh, Mr. Chair, Kelton McCoy is behind end. I'd like him to speak.
Meeting organizer, could you state that again?
Kelton McCoy is behind, but it doesn't look like he was.
Okay, thank you.
There we go.
With no comments, I'm going to move to, close the, uh, public hearing. If there are no further comments, I will close the public hearing. It is the policy of the Planning Commission not to act on an item on the same night as the public hearing. The Planning Commission will weigh all comments and information received tonight in its, uh, deliberation at further meetings. This item will continue to appear on further Planning Commission agendas until recommendation on the petition can be forwarded to the city council. Thank you. The next public hearing item is item four A. I will open the public hearing for agenda four A. The affidavit for, of, uh, publication for notice of public hearing is available for inspection in the planning department. Anybody wishing to speak at this, uh, public hearing should be sure to fill out the attendance roster or if, um, virtually register the meeting, excuse me, register with the meeting organizer, include name, address, so that the accurate records can be maintained. We'll begin the procedure with a brief presentation by staff, followed by a presentation by the petitioner of the hearing. Upon conclusion, the presentation of, uh, city staff will ask, um, to comment on the proposals, conformance with pertinent, uh, regulations and policies. After that, comments will be taken from the general public. Alex?
Chair, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
As noted in your agenda packet, the requested action this evening is actually to continue the public hearing to September twenty-first without review or comment. Uh, this request was made by the applicant last week, while they are further refining their application and bringing in additional materials that will assist with the city's review.
Okay.
The action, uh, that you'll make this evening, I would want to check with Sharon to make sure that there isn't anything more, now that they've opened the public hearing, but I believe that we are, uh, set for moving it to September twenty-first.
I, I believe it has to be a date and time certain, and so it would be September twenty-first at seven P.M.
Okay.
For, uh, Planning Commission to consider.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, so you'll have two actions in and out, not really actions, so you'll need to open up the public hearing and then make a motion to continue it to the September date.
So the public hearing is open, so it would just be a motion now?
Mr. Chair, I move we continue this meeting until September twenty-first, seven P.M.
Second.
Okay. So moved by, um, Commissioner Deekman and seconded by McCoy. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and nay for no. Okay, that moves on. I will close.
We're continuing.
We're continuing, so that stays open. And that continues to the September twenty-first date as indicated on the action request.
Are we having fun up there? There we go.
The next item on the agenda is, uh, land action, um, items, it's, uh, item five A.
Thank you, Chair. This is the Woodwinds Eighth Preliminary Plat. The action requested this evening is to recommend approval of Woodwinds Eighth Edition Preliminary Plat to subdivide a two-point-nine-seven acre site into six single-family lots, subject to conditions outlined in the staff report. As there were numerous, I did not include multiple slides with that. They are mainly generic. I will go through some of the more specific ones during the presentation. Last time Planning Commission saw this item was April twentieth of twenty-twenty-two at the public hearing. Since that time, the applicant has been working mainly on stormwater items that I will discuss later on. The site is located in the northeast corner of Pilot Knob Road and a hundred and fortieth at fifty-nine, twenty-seven, a hundred and fortieth Street. The site is guided for single-family residential and zone residential cluster, which does allow for additional density, however, uses the R-three, the most standard single-family zoning district in Apple Valley, as its baseline. The applicant is not seeking any of the flexibility sought by the residential cluster district. The existing conditions map can be a little bit difficult, so I'm actually just going to flip straight to the aerial. It is a highly wooded site, however, many of the trees are scavenger trees or in poor condition. It has an older home on the site, presumably built somewhere around the nineteen forties. It is not served by city water or sewer. There's an existing access off of one fortieth on the south side that, as noted at the public hearing, has an access restriction easement and will not be utilized as part of this development. Several members of the public did choose to speak at the public hearing. There were two primary comments, several were actually answered at the public hearing. One of the primary ones that was brought up by the neighborhood as a concern was the, whether these six homes would become a portion of the homeowners association. As stated at the public hearing, the ci- city does not have, uh, requirements that would require these homes to join the homeowners association, however, the developer has stated their willingness to do so and is working with the association. The second comment was specifically about bird species, migratory birds, and how they could be protected with the site. I spent considerable time speaking with state experts on this. One of the primary pieces that they said, uh, could be done is encouraging that any of the site grading or tree removals occur during the fall or spring, as migratory paths should be over if you do them early enough or late enough. There are still going to be some disruption, however, we've had many single-family developments town and frankly, many multifamily developments in town that have resulted in some tree loss. However, what we have seen from that is that once the development is complete, wildlife does return to some degree. This entire neighborhood was highly wooded at one time. This site is actually perhaps less wooded than what the original development was back when it was developed in the nineteen nineties. The application is to subdivide the two-point-nine-seven acre site into six single-family lots. What has significantly changed from when the, from when the Planning Commission saw this back in April was, is the stormwater area. And you'll have to bear with me, cause the mouse is still not liking things, um, I'm just going to have to point it out. The southeast corners where the stormwater, uh, wants to go, cause that is the lowest elevation on the site, that also impacts somewhat of the outlot sea you'll see to the east, which is where most of the time was spent by the developer and why we've, uh, the city has received extension on the application or additional time to review, while they worked with the association to see whether ponding could occur onto this outlot. Because of the time constraints, the developer and the city engineer were able to work together to develop a tiered system of three stormwater infiltration areas that allow for all, most of the stormwater to be treated on the site, with only the hundred-year over, uh, hundred-year rain event occurring off-site. There is a condition included within your report that notes that all required off-site easements be provided, that will be further refined before city council. Could you advance to the next slide?
Is this the one slide you want?
Yep, this one's just-
I think it does work.
Okay.
I was just using the cursor, uh, if you were having trouble with that.
The, sorry for the disruption, the, uh, dotted dash line on this plan is a sidewalk location. The plat has been amended to allow for the sidewalk. As we noted at the public hearing, uh, we, we were seeking public input on this, we have not heard any negative or positive supports for it. Sidewalks are strongly encouraged by our comprehensive plan. We do put them into new neighborhoods, so they are going in as a requirement of this development. The developer would be responsible for the dash line in the area of their plat, and the city would be responsible for the dash line to make up the gap down from Essex Way. This allows the, these new homes to have direct access to the trail on the north side of Essex, Essex Way and down to a hundred and fortieth. As I noted on that aerial, this is a very heavily wooded site, however, many of the trees are scavenger trees. Uh, many are in poor condition or are in fact danger, cause there have not been, has not been maintenance on the site for a number of years. Some of the high-quality trees on the site will be taken out by either home pads, driveways, or the actual cul-de-sac itself, however, the periphery trees that are in good condition and at no danger, the developer has gone to significant lengths to try to protect. The exception being some of the very small, uh, I shouldn't say very small, but some of the oaks in the southeast corner where the stormwater ponding was needed. Some of that was attempted to try to be saved in the prior plans, however, with the expansion of not being able to go into that association property, one of those trees will now be removed. Additional notes on the landscaping are that the, our natural resources coordinator actually did an onsite visit and found that some of the trees that were listed in good condition are actually either diseased or dead, and so the developer i- is currently planning on oversupplying replacement trees for these trees in the event that some of those may be, uh, other trees may be damaged as part of the site grading and site work. So it's not over by much, but it gives them a little bit of a leeway. The tree replacement plan has been, uh, updated several times with the help of our natural resources coordinator. We've got additional t- tree species diversity, which is recommended and required by city code. The location of the replacement trees is being focused on the north and south sides of the lot. The eastern and west sides will largely be able to retain many of their trees. It is these north and south sides where the entrances will be affected, and they want to return some of that screening that is current, uh, with the site right now. Site grading, I believe this is really where most of the, uh, concern for the project came forward. Uh, as you can see, the southeast corner is the lowest portion, however, the Woodwinds Association property to the east is lower than any of the portion of this site. Therefore, the challenge was attempting to make it where water did not flow downhill onto neighboring property. By channeling the, the water through this three-tiered system, there is a significant improvement in existing conditions for stormwater treatment and allows for only that hundred-year flood event, or hundred-year rain event to go onto the neighboring property. This further shows, uh, the direction of the water and how it's now being routed through this three-tier system. I thought it was a little bit clearer than the plan before, uh, where you can kind of see that there is going to be three independent ponds, uh, with the westmost one here being the highest. It also demonstrates that there is a little bit of water coming onto that, uh, homeowners association outlot that is currently a ponding area for them. We know that, uh, these will change slightly with some additional spacing, some additional, uh, species that we'll be looking for, but the attempt from the developer was to make these as much of an amenity as possible while treating stormwater, so they will be similar to rain garden-type features. And the city engineer did note, um, and I've noted previously, that this will be a significant improvement from even the existing conditions on the site. The easement in question, this is a sample diagram that the developer was able to provide just prior to the meeting. We haven't had time to see whether this will be the actual easement area that is required, but this is the association outlot on that eastern side. The plat will not include this easement because it is not part of the platted area for the development, so it will be what we call a paper easement recorded against the property at a later date. One of the questions that had also come up at the public hearing that, um, I'd wanted to try to address was just the appearance of the homes. These are a sample elevation of similar homes that the developer has built in other communities. It is consistent with the neighborhood with the three-car garage, two-story style with a walkout basement for most of the lots. There are a couple of lots that have lookout basements. The developer is present to answer any other questions, otherwise I can stand for questions. The action this evening is before you, subject to conditions.
Commissioners, do you have any questions? Alex? Does the petitioner like to come forward with any, uh, additional comments?
Good evening. Um, I thought Alex did a great job. He's been wonderful to work with.
Did you state your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, uh, I'm Bob McNerney, McNerney Family Homes. And I'd want to thank Alex for all the work he's helped with. He's been a huge supporter of this, so that's very much appreciated. I thought he did a very good job tonight describing what was going to be happening there with the property, so I really don't have anything to add myself, but I can take questions.
Commissioners? Thank you. We don't hear any questions. It is the pleasure of the commission.
Mr. Chair, I move we recommend approval of preliminary plat to subdivide a two-point-nine-seven acre parcel into six single-family lots through, uh, Woodwinds Eighth Edition Preliminary Plat, subject to the following conditions, one through eighteen, as outlined in the staff report.
Second? Moved by Commissioner Deekman and seconded by Commissioner Schindler. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and nay for, so moved. Thank you, Alex. Next item is other business. Um, this is item six A, Orchard Place, um, amenity area, North Creek Greenway Trail Concept.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission? I get to present?
Rare treat.
Okay. Bruce, I almost had it.
Yeah.
Back to you.
Is this me? Where do you want to go? To the front?
Um, as you're aware, City of Apple Valley and Dakota County has been working collaboratively on extending the North Creek Greenway. The North Creek Greenway, if you're not familiar with it, is a greenway- is a greenway trail from Farmington to Hegan that winds through the communities of Farmington, Lakeville, Apple Valley, and up to Lebanon Hills, connecting the zoo and other areas. Parts of Apple Valley have not been fully connected to date. So staff has been working with Dakota County to fill these gaps and get some areas, get the greenway completed in areas that we can. Bruce, go ahead and go to the next slide. So the location map that we're dealing with is we worked together with Dakota County on a joint powers agreement to finish some trail gaps from essentially Eastlake Elementary School in the cobblestone area, up Dutton Lane, to the dual-track through cobblestone. There are some segments that need to be connected along the Springs Development, under the tunnel to Pilot Knob, and then make some additional trail connections through Quarry Point Park. And then the planning commission was involved in the approval for Orchard Place and some of the retail development. What we are looking for tonight is some feedback on, if you recall from that development, we included as part of the approval an amenity area that was dedicated by HJ Development, Rockport. And then the city and county contributed some funds to finish an amenity area as part of that development. Bruce? Bruce is the pointer. So that amenity area that we're referring to, the stormwater ponds on the west side of the site near the Pulte development have been completed. It is rough graded for a trail segment to go through there, along with a bridge, the use of the tunnel on 157th. And then there was a small portion that Bruce is pointing to with the pointer that was set up for some future amenity, and that site design was never fully identified. Well, we're at that point that we're trying to move plans forward and are looking for feedback from both Park and Rec and from Planning Commission on what that amenity space should look like. Bruce, go ahead to the next one. The original concepts, when we looked at Orchard Place, had the stormwater as an amenity feature, kind of a gathering place, a connection point on the greenway, retail up above. And this was one of the renderings that we used as what is part of being constructed there. Go ahead, Bruce. With that, staff has been working with a consultant to get all the final construction plans put together for the rest of it. And we came up with four different concepts with kind of different amenities based on some feedback from Dakota County, based on feedback from the public, and then also from the Park and Rec. So I'm going to introduce Karen Booger with SEH to walk through some of the more details in the four different concepts that you invited. You don't have a pointer, so you're gonna-
Thank you. The opportunity to give you an overview of these four concepts for the Orchard Place gathering area. And these are really essentially working designs. And I'm going to just highlight kind of what differentiates the four from each other. And note that all four do have the Greenway Trail bike amenity nodes. And that is to support the Greenway Trail with typical benches, a bike fix-it station, bike loops, and a water fountain. So there's just some of the amenities that are in all four concepts. And so the first concept is, probably has the largest amount of programming. And one of the early input for working on these concepts was the idea of an amphitheater just because of the slope of the site already, it would accommodate having a type of amphitheater. And when you say amphitheater, we're not talking about Kelly Park. We're talking about pretty small informal gathering. So that has an amphitheater, and then also has a promenade. So if you want to move to the next slide, you can look at the plan here. And so this one has, again, a lot of features. It has, the bike amenity node is right along the trail. And then on the opposite side, one of the ideas would be you have like a structure overlook that isn't on the bridge, so you're not obstructing the trail as people are coming across the bridge. And the bridge is located kind of in the, it's in the northwest of the gathering area. Though you can see part of the bridge there. And then as you come into the site, it would be, it would have a promenade with benches and pergolas, with a terrace seating area with cafe tables and chairs possibly, and maybe even a little totlot or a small nature play area. And then on the south side would be the amphitheater would be tucked into the existing slope there. So with, again, with amenities of benches and water fountains and trees to bring shade to the site. And so this was, has the most programming. If you go to concept two, you can look at that one. And this feature, this one features a large circular gathering area. It might have a public art feature in the middle. It has, I would call it a whimsical connection up to, switchback connection up to the retail area. And this is more to address, trying to make me that grade in a smaller area. So that's why it kind of has a very zigzaggy form. And it would be intention for pedestrians, not necessarily bikes. So if we can move to the next slide. So you can see it has a circular form for the gathering area. So this is less programming. There's no amphitheater here at this site. Maybe you would have used special materials like weathering steel, cordon for planters, and even having walls along the walkway as you, with plantings as you walked up to the retail area. And again, this still has the bike amenity node along the trail, kind of tucked in between the two, the two function spaces. And so the third concept, this one actually integrates the gathering and the bike node into one. So it's a little more compact. It still does have an informal amphitheater. Maybe we'd have limestone blocks placed throughout. So if we can move to the next one. So you can see it has, you know, the gathering space with, again, maybe you'd have some type of pergola feature for shade and just creating spaces for people. It does have an amphitheater, again, tucked into the slope. So it's just bringing some of these elements, but maybe downscaling a little bit for this concept here. And then the final concept is quite different. This one has a focus on the upper slope by the retail area and a really strong connection to the retail area. So you can go ahead and move to the plan there. So you see, we still have at the lower area along the trail, we would have the bike amenity node with maybe a pergola for shade and trees. And then a trail that would go up, you know, accessible trail that would bring, come up to the upper terrace. And then with stairs and again, accessible walkway down to the terrace from the retail area. So that, that area that's beyond that red circular line is actually out of the property line for the city project here. That's, that would be the retail. So it would need to be coordinated with them. And then this one would definitely have a lot more infrastructure. You'd need retaining walls, probably railing and stairs. So it would entail a little more infrastructure to get this type of a design into this space here. And then there's one little note. There is a trail that goes, a future trail that's supposed to come to the north. This is the only concept that shows that, but that could be integrated into any of these concepts for the final, final design. So I think that's it.
We took some of the, when we went through all four concepts from the Park and Rec informal discussion, we pulled some of the key words that kept coming up from each of those committee members. And one of them was, they didn't feel the need for an amphitheater. The term shade is a must came up numerous times, whether it was the trees and low maintenance planting beds or a shade structure. They didn't sway one way or the other, but shade is a must was definitely a term used. The informal bench seating was popular. That would be some of maybe the limestone blocks set into the slopes. A gathering place or a place to stop with families was brought up numerous times, separate from the trail portion. The center planner and the public art seemed to garner support. Less programming, more passive was also some key terms we heard. And then the connection to the retail area was an important piece to this, how this central gathering space worked. The Greenway Trail Bike Ammonities was kind of a common theme in all of them, being that this is also part of the greenway. So that seems to be one portion of this that's, that's, has remained unchanged. It's just how it's placed and how it functions with the rest. We thought we would share just some of their key recommendations with how this would come together.
Is there, is there another?
So really no formal action on this, but we are seeking input from the planning commission on review of the concepts and maybe how we can take some of the comments from the Park and Rec Committee and the planning commission and mold it to something to get it built.
All right. Well, maybe if we could each just kind of walk, go through and just kind of write some comments back and then I'll conclude. Whoever.
Sure. Mr. Chair? One of the questions that I have is, and I, I'm just trying to sort of conceptualize this space in terms of the different uses proposed and the different concepts. What, where, help me, help me understand where parking would be? Or are we talking about simply something that's accessed only by bike and walking trail? But I'm trying to get a sense for the distance between parking. So if you were going to do any type of program there, whether it's an amphitheater or otherwise, not everybody's going to ride their bike to it. How does this, where does this fit in, into the retail development and where people would be parking to come?
Primary function is not, this is pedestrian.
Okay.
It is very primary, heavy on primary pedestrian trail. As far as the space being, and that's part of the design, is to set this up as an amenity for pedestrians. Now, as the retail development west of the north-south English Avenue through the middle of the site, obviously there's retail being built currently, Lon Byerly's, different restaurants, Mr. Carwash. On the east side of English, there's still undetermined. I guess you did review Orchard Place Fifth, which would be at the north or the southwest quadrant of 155th and in English. There is still development to be determined, that maybe parking could be a part of that, or there could be some amenities built into the park amenity. I guess the direction we've been trying to guide this is if this, we don't know what that development's going to look like, so we were trying to steer this away from having it be a retail-focused amenity space, have it be a greenway-focused amenity space, and get the comments related to that. So we really weren't setting it up for, as a trailhead for parking. This is more of a destination along a greenway. And none of the North Creek Greenway has a lot of parking. There is parking available at Quarry Point Park. There's parking available at Eastlake Park in Lakeville. There are strategic places that Dakota County and the cities have park amenities with restrooms and parking and other facilities that are placed along the greenway. That could be utilized as a code use.
Because I was, in terms of scope, I don't think it's what, for example, the city of Plymouth has. And I can't remember the name of what it is, but it's, it's a much larger area, but they do have an amphitheater that hosts a concert. But there is ample parking in kind of retail and government areas in and around it, so that if you were doing amphitheater, there would be parking areas to support it. So that's, without that, I think the amphitheater would be difficult. Again, just gauging whatever the walking distances would be, because, you know, I don't know that everybody's going to be able to ride a bike.
I use the term, I prefer to use the term amphitheater more loosely, as I described to the Park and Rec. Some of Dakota County's Whitetail Woods Park has an informal amphitheater. It's more of a passive use. It doesn't host concerts. It's more just an open gathering space for people to sit in. It isn't there to generate parking or crowds. It's, it's more of a passive space, and that's the use. But the overall feedback we did hear is that wasn't something the Parks Department or the Park Committee was looking for, nor does it accommodate the other needs that come along with it, given the space constraints.
Okay. And then otherwise, I think the amenities that accompany or associated with the bike trail are appropriate, especially as the connection to the larger overall trail are made. It would be nice to have those amenities that were described part of, part of this development.
Thank you. Keith?
Mr. Chair, can you give me an idea from the elevation to the east, where the retail will be to where the trail will be in this location? What is the elevation difference between those two?
Almost 15 feet.
Okay, so that's what I was kind of wondering, because I really liked concept four because it somewhat draws in people from the retail space. The first three concepts are really trail-focused, which is really what it's intended to be. But I don't know if it's going to actually draw anybody from the retail space because it's somewhat down in that bowl and hidden from retail, somewhat non-discoverable. So I liked four because it seemed like it would be on plane with that retail and kind of drawing in to the trail. But I do like how the first three are more trail-oriented. So if there was a way to somehow draw in from that retail, but yet make it trail-focused.
That is our next task.
Yeah, and actually, the one that I like the best, that I think may do that the most, is actually the concept number two. Because you've got this, you know, gathering place around there, and you've got this strong zigzag connection to that retail. If you can get those pergolas or whatever they are to be high enough or something like that, where you can see them, draw some interest. Once people know about it, they'll know about it, but people who don't know will never know, you know? So that's my feedback.
Thank you. Mr. Schindler?
Yep. Mr. Chair. Brandon, I, it's hard for me to picture these concepts, just being honest, and understanding what's where and what exactly these, each of these items would look like. I like the, I mean, I kind of went to concept two just naturally because I kind of like that, that gathering area and whatnot. But, you know, I don't, it sounds like the amphitheater might not necessarily be necessary, but I guess it would provide a place for, for people to gather as well, off of the bike path. But I, you know, I don't, I think I would focus mostly on the trail less than the retail. I mean, there's not really going to be a park anywhere near here.
What's the Quarry Point Park, which is under the tunnel? And it's, we're also setting up some similar nodes that we didn't have a detailed discussion here to separate some of the park users from the trail users and then have some of the bike nodes at each of those locations that I identified on the, on the greenway. So it's similar, but this is, this is a bit of an island out here.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think the most thing I'd focus on is the trail amenities. But there is retail there, and people might want to walk down and look, take a look and all that as well, so. Kind of, can kind of go either way on that. I just, for me, being able to see more what it's actually going to look like, I struggle with these diagrams, with trying to picture what it's going to be and what each of these items are, what they look like. Thank you.
Commissioner McCollum?
I kind of, I like the discussion because if it's, I used to live adjacent to a, I don't even know the mileage, bike trail. But it had scenic areas, but it also had not direct connections, but close connections to retail. And so if you're on a bike, and especially given the length of this proposed trail, you could conceivably have this be a spot where, where folks could ride their bike, go up and grab something to eat or drink, come down and hang out, and then continue on or go backwards. So, you know, to Commissioner Deekman's point, to Commissioner Schindler's point, maybe you don't want that. Maybe you, you just kind of want it to be a trail-focused with the concept for overlooking it. But as the, back in the day when I used to ride a bike, it was nice, depending on the distance, to be- distance, to be able to say, let's go as far as here, let's stop for lunch, let's grab a bite to eat and then turn around and come back. And I don't know if there are spaces like that along the, the duration of the trail, but that might be a nice feature of this that would attract users to this area if there were a connection. Again, that's the vision for this particular segment of the trail.
Bruce, could you go back to the overall map?
Sure.
Please, not the Orchard Place, but the one prior. One more, one, there you go. One of the features I didn't elaborate on, but that follows up with your comment, wayfinding and maps are a significant part of the, of the county theming. So I didn't comment about the incorporation of better wayfinding, but you can take an existing trail system and park amenities that's already built out at Cobblestone Lake. And there are nodes that we're adding at various places to help people get, some, some of these trail locations, they don't know that they exist. So we're, we're creating a stronger visual orientation with the trail, along with wayfinding that maybe there's a sign at the, at the CDA building where the node turns to the tunnel that points to retail. So there's a little bike node where people know that there's different places, no different here as it continues to develop out as well. So it is, you know, that's, the intent is to take those bike users, families that, that they do have, not everybody's going to bike 20 miles in one length. You have a lot of different users at different levels. And one of the comments was children and families, they're not going to go 20 miles. They're going to go short distances, have a destination or a reason to go somewhere. And we want this trail to accommodate kind of all the users.
Correct. And that's exactly what I'm, because, and, and it's kind of comparing somewhat apples to oranges. The trail that I'm talking about was an abandoned rail, rail bed that was converted to a bike trail. And so out in the city of Mound, for example, there was an old building that had served the railroad and then now that's a nice little diner. And then on across the other side of the street, there's a place you can get ice cream. So it was certainly a place where you could get the family, get on the bikes and go and enjoy the trail, but also...
And we have all that within this small segment that we're trying to connect up as a matter of pointing people to it.
Exactly. Yep, exactly.
Thank you. As far as my comments go, I recall from our early on, the, when we started originally looking at how this was going to be built out, this area, that this idea of the amphitheater type or the tiered was, I think, part of that discussion, if I recall correctly. It was a number of years ago. But I, the reason I kind of like that is because you can, you know, have these grass areas where people can gather, but have separation at the same time, I think. And I think it, as you were mentioning, I think the, using the term amplifier is maybe, is not the correct term to maybe be presenting on.
So sloped seating area.
Sloped seating area. It may be a better way of presenting that, that it's, you know, we're not trying to compete with Kelly Park or anywhere else within the city in, in this particular regard. And as far as the last discussion that was going on here is that, I mean, I just, Cobblestone Lake, the amount of people that use that on a, you know, daily basis for walking and so forth, I just see that now going to be opening up and continuing, you know, that's going to branch out under, with the fact that you have this tunnel and these connection points to go over to the retail for the restaurants and so forth, that there, these are within walking distance that I think people within that area have been looking or wanting. And I think you mentioned like with families, that it's an easy bike ride over there and to, you know, grab something and have an area where they can actually then bike to to to, you know, sit. So I think it's kind of a, as everybody's been talking, it's an area of very mixed use for bikes and then maybe some easy biking access to the area from the retail for, you know, somebody grabs something to eat for dinner or lunch or what have you, then they can go over to that area.
Mr. Chair, Brandon, the, it, it's, I hear the messaging from the Park and Rec Advisory and the, the, the word amphitheater can be a lightning rod type of word. And, but I was playing with the wording here a little bit is that I, I don't think we're trying to create, create an amphitheater so much as we're trying to create perhaps a learned experience where it's a destination-related terrorist gathering.
Could you go to the last slide from the Park and Rec comments that we summarized?
Yeah, yes.
Some additional notes related to that. Limestone bench seating, keep natural character and utilize the slope. I didn't, that, that was some other notes that, like I said, use the term amphitheater loosely, but the way the, the site slopes, it's still a space that people might, with, with shade trees and limestone benches and incorporate it into the trail and still be able to switch back it, that, that's what we're looking to maybe mold together. That seems to be a common, a common comment. Passive seating.
Then as far as the concepts, you know, I like Concept One with the tiered seating area, but then as I think Commissioner Deekman mentioned, there's the amenities and so forth that come with Concept Four that, that could maybe be broad, you know, co-mingle some of those things, I think is kind of the message I was kind of hearing back and forth from folks.
Oh, that's great. That's a dialogue.
Hopefully that helps.
No, it's, it's great dialogue and the feedbacks, that's what we wanted to get out of this forum.
Commissioner Schindler?
Yeah, one more thing. Is, is shade going to come only from trees?
Well, the intention was to provide some type of structure in some of the concepts type of, who else? That was one comment that came out of the, the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee meeting was per, gazebos or maybe smaller individual structures, right? Shade and families to, you know, have a lunch.
Picnic tables, a place for them to sit.
Yeah.
Because it is a long ways from anything. Trees may not provide all of it. This is a very large space with the stormwater amenities. It's an old mining area. There aren't much, there's not much here for vegetation. So we, we may be looking at supplemental shade outside of shade trees just to, and to Commissioner Deekman's comment about making it visual to see it from the retail, maybe the structure helps with that visual to get people there as well. So we'll be looking at maybe a combination.
Yeah. Driving by, you can see the area that you're talking about and that, that's, it's, it's large.
Mr. Chair, Brandon, can you comment on, I think it's, it's Concept Two? I think the city has a maintenance responsibility when all's said and done.
So the maintenance has not been fully determined between City of Apple Valley and Dakota County. The property through the Greenway portion of this is owned and retained by Dakota County. The Greenway will be maintained by Dakota County. There may be, the property for the, the bowl property is dedicated to the city as, as part of park dedication. So we have to sort out some of the maintenance responsibilities between the two. We just, we're not there yet with, we're having those discussions and I think some of that will tip or kind of vet out depending on how the concepts come together in the, in the final.
Brandon, the, would the zigzag type of design create more of a, a maintenance concern? What I visualize is we certainly want this to be year-round usable and, and, and I hate it when I, I go to park facilities and the, the top is closed and the bottom is closed because it's, it's just difficult to maintain during the winter.
The switchback would be a difficult trail to maintain. The intent and the feedback we did get from Park and Rec is this needs to be a, a 12-month facility. The Greenway, the North Creek Greenway is to be plowed for the winter months by, by, by Dakota County. One of the comments we received regarding Concept Two from the Park and Rec was they liked the switchbacks, but felt it was a little bit awkward just because of how, the switchbacks are great to a certain extent, but also very difficult to a certain extent. And we, I think the word softened was, was used.
Gradual, kind of like...
Yeah, more of a gradual build it in. If, you know, and that may take a little bit of work just to get something more gradual, which would alleviate your concern with maintenance.
Okay. I, I'm happy to go wherever you send me with my little cursor here, but...
Commissioner McCollum?
Just one little observation. I think too that the, they're, they just finished mostly the redevelopment of the ball fields on the north side of Apple Valley High School. And there's a pretty significant drop in elevation from the, the trail along 140th down to the main ball field. I, I don't know, again, what it is in terms of the distances here, but I thought they did a very nice job of making that a soft transition. And that might be someplace to look.
The Greenway will actually, it's all graded to almost a singular elevation rounding the ponds. And then there's some slope going up to the Pulte that ties in the townhouses there. And then you can get under 157th. You could gradually get back on, up to the, to, to street level on 157th. The challenge here is there is significant grade and a, and a very small space. So we don't have the ability except to go to the north ultimately when that develops for a trail connection, to make a gradual connection there. But the one in this small space, we'll have to find a way and it won't be as gradual as what you're pointing out.
More of a switchback, but, okay.
Good dialogue. We appreciate it and thank you.
Well, thank you for coming forward and asking our feedback on it. The next item of business is Item 6A, upcoming schedule and other dates.
Coming. So, the next Planning Commission meeting is September 7th at 7:00 PM. The next council meeting, this is my last Planning Commission meeting, and the last council meeting will be August 25th at 7:00 PM. And I, and so goes, we had such a good conversation the last time. I'm not looking for more conversation about me, if you don't mind me jumping to Item 6.
Go right ahead.
But what I, what I've been able to reflect on was we did a very nice presentation for Tim Burke when he retired from the commission. And one of the things that we shared was a plant, grow, prosper poster. And I realized, well, heck, why, why wouldn't, I, I can't tell you what's going to happen as you move forward. We, we've used a marketing tagline for several years and I, I think it's effective. What, what I appreciated most was the Greater MSP, our Regional Economic Development Organization. They, in their first couple of years, used Grow and Prosper. And I'm thinking, well, we knew that all along. And, and then moved on to other things. They're very good that they, they have a marketing firm and they're just very good at it. But this carried the day. But I, I thought that it would be appropriate for each of you to have what Mr. Burke has.
Thank you.
And I'll make sure that Becky and Jeff and Julie also can. And, and then in your materials is an invitation to Bruce After Hours on August 31st. And I was trying to get ahead of Ed Carney from the chamber with what he would call his next business after hours event. So I, I tried to do that. And that's, that's all I wanted to say. I want to acknowledge that all of you have lived portions of that theme for several years. And thank you for, for playing that role for the city.
Well, thank you, Bruce, and thank you for your service.
You bet.
Appreciate it.
That's, that's all I got for this evening.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is adjournment.
Move adjourn?
Second.
Okay. We had Mr. Schindler and then seconded by Commissioner Deekman. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And nace, that passes and we are adjourned. Thank you.